At the end of the day.
Call the meeting order. This is really a meeting to try to get a little additional clarification for the board relative to requests from departments and what we're looking at as far as our budget. Some questions that we had, part of it was on scanning needs, and I see I have a sheet here that with some responses on that, appears that we have, obviously Public Defender, they had indicated the other day that they had maybe six months to a year's worth of work. State's Attorney basically has said the same thing, they have about six to, estimating six to 12 months' worth of work of scanning. Now, one of the things that State's Attorney is paying $235 per month just for storage, they may be the only one that's paying for outside storage, because I don't think, Eric, you're not paying for outside storage, no. So his is all in-house. So that's something we might want to discuss further as far as how we may try to take care of those needs of getting that scanning current. Also, I know that we had some questions for Highway, but Highway was closed on, they don't work on Friday, so we don't have that information available to us. So I guess I'll open it up to the board to see what questions you may have that we need to get some further answers for.
Mr. Chair.
Items. Commissioner LaCroix.
After reviewing some of this, I think a good starting point would be making a decision on if with that CRF funds, 6 million, if we make a motion to just use that alone just for the one-time expenditures that we're looking at it, that might help out the auditor's office when we move forward with the numbers that she's working with. That way, we know right off the bat that that's going to be used for one time. I'd make that motion.
I'd second.
I've got a motion in a second to use the 6 million that's available for one-time expenditures. Further discussion on that. So Cindy, as I'm understanding, that would not show as part of the budget, would be outside of the expenditures, outside of the normal budgeting process.
And I would just reduce the estimation for my cash reserves to take that amount out, yes.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Other questions? Items?
Tell me again where the, if you would, is it the page where Board Discussion Direction Items were 24, 25th? Is those, because some are, where are the one-time expenditures at?
They're on second page.
Yeah. Take your book, it should be, huh?
Yep, some of them are, and some of them aren't. Some are secondary budget requests, including FTs.
Oh, okay, sure.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So I guess which ones are which? Which one are we going to be using?
Looking page. So this is the secondary 2020 budget request list by fund. These are the one-times. Right here is, this is the list of the one-time possible expenditures.
Secondary budget, including new FTs or one-time?
Don't pay attention to that.
Just this, 6 through 15 are the one-times, right?
Yeah.
And what was that total?
I don't know what it totals. It's not quite, it's not 6 million, but you've got that stuff up there too, the sole.
And I think that the public safety building lobby, the 800,000 that's listed there, that's actually 400,000 for us.
Yeah, yeah.
So we have the top 1, 2, 3, and then 6 through 15. Cindy, did we add that was, that total?
I'm sorry, what, what were you looking at?
We talked a little step.
Did we add 1 through 3, and then 6 through 15 for one-time costs?
Could be.
Okay, that, this is a total.
Do we have added anything? We're just, from my understanding of Lloyd's motion, is we're setting aside that $6 million for one-time purchases.
The total?
Or expenditures.
We haven't approved what those are going to be yet.
So it's 6,466.
That's what I came up with.
What Ron said.
But that does not include the, this stuff over here, though.
Doesn't include on top?
Doesn't include.
Does it include this 2 million?
No, no.
Okay. That's not including the 2,180,000.
Right, it does not include that.
So it'd be 14, 6, 8, 4, 8,484 with the 3 on top.
Which, the 2 on the top, the Rapid City Youth Council and Black Hills Works, those are requests that they want those to be ongoing, every-year budget items.
Yes.
So you should maybe look at those a little bit differently than that 2 million for the Pennington County Housing. That could be moved to the one-time.
The housing?
The housing, yes.
Okay. So that would knock this up to 8 million, then?
8,466.
And then the while industrial part, would that be one-time?
Well, that would be a one-time, but also it's underneath those ARP funds, it may qualify for that.
Have we, have we determined?
That's...
And that's where I'm kind of leaning with that, with those ARP funds.
We haven't, we haven't seen the final on that, have we?
Not yet.
So, we haven't seen the final on that yet, so, we're, you know, the initial stuff, looks like it would probably qualify for that funding, for the newest bill.
Lobby and the courthouse tunnel wouldn't qualify for the money coming with 11 million?
I don't know, vote or not?
Yeah, from what I'm, I don't think it's been really clarified yet, if it's just bridges, roads, and...
Well, water and sewer.
Yeah, water and sewer.
Can, can we go through those?
So 650,000 that's listed for the courthouse tunnel, where did this number come from? Might, might, tool brought that, not supported, just he said, this is what we think that could cost. And, and that's probably a good, that's probably a low number. Yeah.
So we're going to go through each one of these requests? Is that what we're going to do? What HCTB funding request again?
That's a health trust.
They need to, they need to have it in the reserves?
Well, I think we can, John, do you want to come up and address that?
And I don't know if it makes sense for the board to want to go through these one-times today, or if you want to put that off to a future date and just focus on the 2022 budget requests and the secondary budgets.
The budget was, or the motion was just to say that 6 million's going to go to one-time expenses, not saying who we're going to get yet.
Today, okay.
That was just so when we move forward with the budget.
That's good.
Maybe you can explain it better than I can.
So none of these can be in our regular, well, Lloyd, yours and the Black Hills Works could go into general fund budget, right? So that would change our general fund. Is any of these others expenditures, can they go in the general fund budget? That's, I guess, and 320 from like lamplight, or some of this, I don't think all needs to come out of the 6 million, if you look at some of it, but...
Let's just have John explain the request here from healthcare.
Commissioners, John, more Pennington County Human Resources and Healthcare Trust Board Chair. What we're seeking is reimbursement for some COVID-related expenses over the course of this past year, so that's the $400,000. It's actually for all of that amount, less about 35,000, I believe. The rest were actually all incurred expenses due to COVID, so we're seeking reimbursement because the money that came back to the county was COVID-related. We'd like to get that back into the trust fund if we could, because we actually had a deficit spending over the last couple of years of about $450,000.
So this amount would bring you back pretty close to...
It'll get us pretty close to even.
So how much do you think was COVID-related?
It's about $370,000 roughly.
So is there, I guess I could ask Cindy later, can, is there anything wiggle room in the general fund where some of this doesn't have to come out of the one-time expenditures, meaning because we have CPI and growth?
There is not. Not with the current base budget.
Okay. And the base isn't any secondary in there, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other of these that need discussion currently? Mr. Chair, one question. So if we have these up, obviously they're coming up, they exceed 6 million, so would our goal be to try to get that, get where they match each other, get it as close to 6 million as possible? Based on priorities? Right, okay.
Right, 8,466, we have to cut 2.5.
So Cindy, do you want to give us a quick synopsis again? I know that we did this on Friday, but tell us again what your information here is telling us.
With the base budget entered, I'll go back to my other worksheet here. Like I said, with the base budget, none of the secondary items have been added to this. I know I need to make the adjustment for Fire for their work comp. Dustin had indicated the Met Warren contract went up, and there's also some revenue that supports that, so I have not made that adjustment to the base that I've submitted. And then Scott had also indicated he's got an adjustment on the revenue side for some of his. That is not in the base budget that you're doing currently.
Okay. Any idea how much Scott was talking about there?
$25,000. It wasn't a huge amount.
Yeah, okay.
And then I did go in, I know you haven't voted on it yet, but I did go in and remove $6 million in cash, just so you could see where the reserve would be, and that would be at 23.97% is where the reserve would be.
Okay.
Estimated at the year-end, 12/31 of '22.
Was that 23 instead of 20?
It's at 23.97, almost 24%.
So if we took it down to 20, how much money is that?
I'd have to go back and do some calculating on that, Deb. Do you want to start looking at secondaries, and we can add them in and take them out and see where you're at?
Well, actually...
I think each percent there represents close to a million as well.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is because we wanted our reserves at 20, and they're at 23, you said?
24.
24, you see what I'm saying? So that might bring up some of those totals for that 6 million, am I correct, Cindy? Or are we going to be using it for...
It depends on what you want to fund. It depends whether you want to fund some of these secondary requests, or whether you just want to fund the one-time requests.
Want to talk about the...
I don't recommend doing the secondaries out of one-time funds. It's my feeling.
I guess let them try to figure out why we just said 6 million out of the one-time, because we want to use the other money for not one-time. You see what I'm saying? If there's still...
If there's still more.
There's still...
And there might be, you know, if we go in and adjust that number up, there might Not used to working without a mouse here. Don't know why I didn't bring it with me.
Anything but the one-times, I'm just saying, is adding to your budget every year. That's why I'm saying maybe up the...
What'd you guys come up with, with your numbers total of these Pennington County?
8,466. 8,466.
8,966.
That would not include the housing or youth or Black Hills Works.
No, the 8 million does, the 6, the 6 didn't.
Oh, how much did you come up, eight, eight, what?
4,66.
What I meant to say is that don't include the RCUs and Black Hills Works.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
I guess I would, one thing we can clear out of this right now is to move...
Ron, can I ask what you...
Black Hills Work and Youth Council into...
Ron, did you add 800,000 for PCB Lobby, or did you add 4? Do you remember? It's only 4.
No, I added, just what you see there, I just added that.
Okay, you gotta take off 400 then, because 400 of that...
8,66.
Yes, sir. Just to make sure.
Because the city pays half of that, right?
Yes, sir.
So we're roughly 1,66 over, or 2,66 over the 6 million threshold.
Yes, sir.
Did we interrupt you, Cindy?
I can't think and listen and do all of that at the same time. My brain's not functioning that far out today. I did go in and plug in 8.5 million, and that would bring us down to just over 20%, but then there again, you're not taking into account any of the secondary...
Right, but that would be one-time spending then, if we chose it to be that way?
If that's what you chose to do, yeah.
So that way it didn't become ongoing cost.
Uh-huh.
So Cindy, would it be wise to, like, take the Youth Council and Black Hills, and so when we're working on this, move them to general?
We could certainly do that, if that's what you want to, I mean, if the board...
And then we, that would give us, as the commission, we'd take Pennington County Housing, the 2 million, take that, move it down to our worksheet here to one-times. I mean, I think later on, we can still have the discussion on those two, but just for the purpose of doing budgets.
So Lloyd, by chance, did you talk to Sheriff Tom about the 15,000 in MacArthur because of what the kids are doing? Kevin? Did you check, by chance, the MacArthur grants for the Rapid City Youth Council? Because we have 15,000 towards the Youth Council this year.
Yeah, Kevin Tom, Pennington County Sheriff, I did visit with Commissioner LaCroix and the mayor, and we're going to split the cost this year on the Youth Council, where we'd put up 15,000, the city's splitting up 15,000, but we didn't talk about doing it on an ongoing basis. It was just a one-time for this year.
But this year, you would, you have 15 in your budget, or in the MacArthur, or no?
Correct. Between our budget and MacArthur, we would absorb that, but again, that's, that would be a one-time.
2022.
Yep.
Yeah, so you, that is funded then by Sheriff and MacArthur?
Yeah.
So it's not general fund?
Only in 2021, not 2022.
Correct. That'd be for this year, as I understood it, correct?
They need it for 2022, not this year. So that's what, what their budget is for, is for 2022, not this year, because they've worked through it to get the budget, and city's going to work on theirs.
So what I'm saying is you only need 15, not this year, but you're using it for 22, right?
Yep.
You see what I'm saying?
We're good for one year, whichever year it is, it's 21 or 22, I guess I understood it was 21, if it's 22, we got it covered.
Yeah, it's 22.
So he's, he's doing it through Sheriff's and MacArthur.
Yep.
Yeah.
That gets you started.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, that gets for one year, that's why we came to the commission, wanted to do it, have it in the budget. But yeah, it, there's, there's funding in the MacArthur for one year, but I wanted, that's why they came to the commission, is to become partners on that.
You're going to be here a long time.
So does that mean we're considering this for, for this budget, or not, if it's covered? I'm just...
Not 22, but if he wants ongoing, he'll come next year, and then just say, you know, this worked out really good, we like it ongoing, it's nice to have a trial basis anyway, Lloyd, and see if you love it, or if it needs to expand somewhere else into the county, that kind of thing. You see what I'm saying? Because you might be, need more, once you expand it through county and city.
Yeah, I mean, if we could give a proof so they know that they can have it up for 2022, and explain to them that, yeah, you'll have to come back, and then maybe, and give a report on what, what you did with that, and that would be fine.
Yep, show them the process.
So that would leave us as, pretty much, don't even worry about it.
Correct.
Correct? Okay.
They funded.
So, we still got, we'd have Black Hills Works, we'd have to discuss.
Only thing is, they're not funding anything else through nonprofits, except for the seniors.
Yeah.
I know it's not much, but it's still, we're not funding anything else, so it'd be kind of hard to have one funding source in our budget.
I agree.
So, we need to make a motion that we're not funding them?
For the...
3,000.
For the what?
3,000. Because we have nobody else. We usually use the extra money, and that's what we have said in the past, that anything that's extra for that goes to our care campus and our other people that have those needs, and they have all kinds of people that use that funding in those care campus issues, so...
Oh, are we talking about the Black Hills Works one now? Okay. Yeah, I think I have to agree with that. I mean, I mean, I operate a nonprofit, and we have to operate on our own, so, I mean, it's one of those things that if we, if the county is already committed to doing the care campus and the crisis stabilization, I think that's where we should stay focused, because as you open up to more nonprofit entities, then that will make more nonprofit entities interested in coming to ask for county dollars, and seeing the budget that we're working with today, I don't know if that's viable in the future.
When, that's pretty much what our care campus is, so, is what a lot of the nonprofits do.
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd make a motion to move the Pennington County Housing projects down to, for board discussion under one-time, and youth city council to be funded through the Sheriff's Department for 2022, for one-time, for 2022 as a trial, and to remove Black Hills Works.
Second.
Request.
Got a motion and a second. The only question I have on that is that, relative to the Pennington County housing, we may, if, we may choose not to include that in that, because other funding could be available for it.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Now we're doing general fund? Erie?
Yeah.
So Cindy, if you left the CRF funds at 6 million, and you took everybody's request this year that put in secondary, what did that come to? I thought you had it before, that's why I'm asking you, and not saying that if you don't.
Just a second, got to go find another worksheet.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
Repeat the question, Deb.
So if we did all the secondary, remember if you just kept the 6 million in the CRF, left the other 23 or 24% in reserves, but we wanted to look at doing secondary, remember with the 3 or 4 million extra, how much would the secondary budgets come up to?
A lot.
Yeah.
Yeah, the secondary budgets are a lot.
It does, but...
They're quite a bit.
I, you know, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I haven't really had a chance to really go through a lot of these secondaries, FTEs or anything since, since Friday, to really make good and informed decision on whether, what I want, don't want. I don't know how you guys feel, but...
Well, last meeting, we sat down, and Cindy, now if I understand that, that would be roughly $12 million plus.
That's over all funds, yes.
Right.
So all the secondary are 12 million?
12 million, 245,045.
12 million, say it again. 245,05?
12 million, 245,045.
045.
But you've got three very large anomalies in there with the accumulated building, with the county fire, and with Highway. So you kind of have to look at those three a little bit differently.
What do you mean, Holly, Fire?
Well, like, the Fire Administrator's got a secondary request of 2.6 million.
We put that in one-time, so, right?
That's not, I don't think it's in...
Yeah, that one's in the list for the...
Yeah, so it's not in, so it's not in this one.
And, and none of that is ongoing funding, is that correct?
Correct.
So if we took out, and is there any others that are in here on one-time fundings that are added to the 12 million, 245?
We need clarification on Highway.
Yeah. Do you want to hear the clarification?
Joe, where'd you go?
Go left?
Sean, you got to clarify. Just kidding.
So Sean, do you want to, do you want to explain the...
I'll pass it on to Joe. We waited for you.
Looking for some clarification and further information on your secondary request, 5.5.
Okay, I don't have that in front of me, let me go grab my computer if you don't mind.
Okay.
Do we have anybody else that we can talk with? Erie, any questions while he's doing that?
I know Fire is communication infrastructure, remember the towers and facilities, so it's 2 million facilities.
For Fire Departments and whatever the other 647 is.
647, those communication towers, which I think, I don't know if that's Fire's responsibility, but...
And when I created the secondary budget sheet that you're looking at now, I didn't realize what Fires was. So you've got it listed under the one-times, and it's listed under these secondaries.
Yeah.
I want to take it off of the secondaries if you're going to maybe fund them with the one-times.
Yeah.
Okay.
So which one was that, Holly?
But County Fire.
County Fire.
So take 12 million, 245,045, Ron, and minus 2,647 off of it, whoever likes to add.
I'm trying to figure out where you got the 12 million.
I don't know. We're adding up all these secondary.
045 minus 2,647, let's see if I had it right. Nope.
What?
It's a 9,598,045.
I'm not sure, but...
Up with, Holly?
I'm, I'm almost there.
598,045.
Relative to the 2 million for the Fire Departments, so we got to keep in mind that Silver City doesn't have any land yet to put that Fire Department, so I don't know if that would happen in 2022 or not.
Right.
Right.
The main thing is just take it off the 12 million, 245,045, because it's in one-time request, Ron. So the total is, if I'm correct, Holly, 9,598,045 without that in there? Nope? 9,567,557? Okay. And that's without Fire.
One more time, Molly. The only thing that's removed is the County Fire?
Correct.
Okay. So Joe?
Yeah. Okay, so our secondary budget, the ongoing funding that is in there is our additional FTEs at 138,456. Those FTEs would consist of two full-time positions in Rapid City. One of those would be a full-time highway worker in the Rapid City Division, and then we're tossing around the idea, a new idea during the summer months of using one of those FTEs to, to fund two part-time, non-benefited employees during our summer months, to help with our asphalt crews doing, you know, raking asphalt. They wouldn't be required to have a CDL, probably be a little bit lower on the wage scale, but it would just help our four... They wouldn't be required to have a CDL, probably be a little bit lower on the wage scale, but it would just help our, uh, forming out with scheduling-wise, like this week alone, we've got two individuals that are out on vacation, right? We have a sometimes we have a long winter and those guys like to take their vacations, so this would just help keep those projects moving during the summer, during those summer months. Um, and then the additional FTE would be going to, uh, Hill City Shop for when South Rochford Road is paved, that's gonna be an additional twelve miles of high, or of, uh, asphalt that's going to require a higher, higher level of maintenance than the current gravel does. Um, so, you know, likely require a third truck in that, uh, division as well, which leads me to the, the next one-time funding request, um, in our secondary budget. Hill City Shop was designed and built in the, I believe it was the sixties or seventies, uh, by the DOT, and then the county then bought that from the DOT and lets them use two stalls of our, our, of our shop there. With adding a third truck, we don't have the, the facilities or, or the shop space to house that truck in a, in a climate-controlled facility. And that, being that it's outdated, it does need to be, it's our last shop to be updated, the other three are, um, new within the last five to, to seven years or remodeled. The fuel station in Hill City itself is actually reaching the end of its lifespan also. So that's another reason that Hill City needs to be designed and, and built. Then the next one-time funding would be our Rapid City Equipment Storage Building. Currently, we've got, uh, two cold storage buildings that are built in the seventies also when the, the, I don't know, the story is that they got moved in to site from another place, possibly DOT. Nobody really knows for sure where they are, where they got moved in from. But the bottom is starting to rust out, they're, they're starting to show their age and they have dirt floors in them. So our mechanics need to work on something, they've gotta shuffle around everything and get set piece of equipment out and get it down to the shop, which normally isn't a big deal, but would make life a lot easier if we were able to have one large storage facility to house all those pieces of equipment, and then if need be, our mechanics would be able to, uh, work on those pieces of equipment in that same shop. And then currently are, there's snowplows that are in those cold storages that we plug in every winter, so they'll start when it, when it is cold out, and this building would be climate-controlled, so be less wear and tear on those, those, uh, outfits as well. Um, and then the, uh, the last request would be an additional two motor graders. Basically, the reasoning behind this is, right now, we've got four motor graders that are out of, currently out of warranty, they're two thousand elevens, they're getting up there in hours, they're around that eight thousand hour mark. If we were to replace all four of these in two thousand twenty-two, would get all of our motor graders back under warranty and lessen the risk to the county as a whole. So we have in our twenty-one budget, two motor graders, that, so this would, request would just be an additional two, um, for our two thousand twenty-two.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So on my sheet, it shows four graders, but what you're saying, two are already scheduled in the general budget and one an additional two, so that would be three twenty-five per grader.
Correct, I think the number this year, when we bought our motor grader was like three twenty-one, six, I think is what it was, or three twenty-one something, and just kinda trying to account for a little bit of that inflation, I don't know how much they're gonna go up or if they're gonna go up.
And then the four point seven, uh, four hundred, or four million, seven ten for the shop. I guess, how, how did you, how did we arrive at that? Is that some kind of a rough bid or?
It's a rough estimate, uh, based on what maybe our salt storage building cost, what our previous New Underwood shop cost as well, and then what our worm shed cost when that was built as well.
How big of a building would that be?
Uh, I don't remember the number, I think it was about a hundred and forty by a hundred and forty, it was, it was a very large building.
And then would the other two buildings have to be raised to make room for this, or is there room to build this without raising the other two buildings?
No, this would, uh, replace the two buildings, there's no, we, with the construction of our salt storage building, we kinda used up the rest of our building site, so these, those buildings would have to come down.
So would that dollar amount include the, uh, demolition of those two buildings?
Again, it's a rough estimate, I would, I would hope so at that cost, but I'm, I'm not sure.
Okay.
So Joe, we attempted to get you set up on a schedule so that everything is gonna be under warranty.
Yeah.
So are these motor graders the only thing that's that you don't, that currently don't have warranty on them?
Not the only thing, we have several trucks, our trucks generally only have warranty on them for about a year. Uh, but these blades are our most expensive piece of equipment that have a lot of hydraulic stuff on them that we can't fix. If like, say, so this last year, these same four blades had a hydraulic pump failure, and if it hadn't been for RDO coming to the table and helping us out, it could've cost us upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, um, for the four blades.
So. Okay, we go with the funding for the, for the two for two thousand twenty-two. So that only leaves you with two of them, if we didn't do the secondary, it only leaves you with two of them that are not on the warranty then?
Correct.
And would they be scheduled for twenty-three then?
So at twenty-three, we only buy one. And then twenty-four, we'd buy the other one, and then we'd trade in one of the ones that are currently under warranty.
Okay, okay.
If this, if, if these two additional blades were to be funded, we would continue on that schedule. We would just likely trade in blades a little earlier and continue on this schedule and keep them under warranty.
I tend to agree with, well, with the discussion, cause I remember when we had this discussion with the replacement, I mean, I think you guys came up with a good plan to get, get to that point. And we, we've got the, the manpower to be able to help keep us there, I think we're in a lot better shape than we were three years ago. You know what I'm saying? I mean, I think we struggled with that, but we had some great discussions up here about the maintenance and the fair. And I think you guys got a good plan for the replacement, we may, my personal opinion, I think we may have to get by by a couple of years, but I think we've got the manpower to do it. And.
Mr. Chair.
Sure.
That's my thought.
Commissioner Roskin.
If I remember, uh, warranty would be about seven thousand hours?
Seven years, seven thousand hours, correct.
And so the two that, the two older ones that would be out of warranty, are they at seventy-five hundred hours or thirteen? I mean, if it's not that much over seven, I agree with Lloyd, we could probably hold off on that for a year.
I think they're all right about that eight thousand hour mark. They're, they're between the seven and eight thousand hour mark at this point, they're, they're two thousand eleven, so they're ten years old. They are in our Rapid City Division where they get about three to four hundred hours a, a year. They're not in a wall division or a Hill City Division where they get a thousand, fifteen hundred hours a year, so that's kinda the, been our cycle. But our two blades in New Underwood currently are not under any warranty. And then our, we have two blades in Rapid City are not under any warranty, the two blades in, in, um, New Underwood are out of warranty and they get probably about a thousand, fifteen hundred hours, they've got a lot of gravel to cover down there.
So Joe, tell me this, because what I heard you say is that, uh, asphalt takes more maintenance than the gravel?
It's just, not necessarily more maintenance, but it's a, uh, higher level of service compared to our, when you read our snow policy. So four inches or more, we've gotta go out on our gravel roads, two inches or more, we've gotta go out on our asphalt roads. So that's what I was saying is, is with that, it requires the frequency. And then generally, you don't wanna touch your asphalt with a blade if you don't have to, if you got a truck, it's much more efficient to, to do that asphalt with a truck than it is a motor grader.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lester.
On those extra two, uh, motor graders, uh, what's the worst-case scenario if they went down? You said it's about twenty-five thousand dollar for each one for that hydraulic pump, is that what I understood? But if you said all four of them went down, it'd be about a hundred thousand, maybe I misunderstood.
We don't have the exact numbers, just kind of estimates, because RDO did come to the table. There were four of identical failures, so they did bring that to John Deere. John Deere said, hey, yeah, we'll kick in this much, RDO kicked in this much, and it ended up costing us about five thousand dollars a blade. Worst-case scenario, if we would not have caught those, it would've, basically it was the main hydraulic pump, the bearing in it was going bad. So they would've sent metal through the entire system, therefore could've taken out the hydraulic pumps for several other pieces of, uh, equipment on the motor grader.
Rough guess, and what's the worst-case scenario if, if both of those went down?
Uh, the last one we had went down right before I started, um, and it was upwards of a hundred thousand dollars, and it was just barely in one, in warranty for one blade. That was the hydraulic system, and RDO covered that because it was under warranty, had it not been under warranty, it'd cost the county probably a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So Joe, the one that has eight thousand dollars on it, if we, I assume it's got some resale value then?
The, we're trading one in this year, that, that's the number I've got to go off of, it's got about seventy-six hundred hours on it, I believe. And we're, they're getting ninety-three five for guaranteed trade-in from RDO. It's going on our auction, so it might bring more than that, but it might not, so if it doesn't bring more than that ninety-three thousand number that RDO gave to us, at the auction, R, RDO will buy it for that ninety-three thousand.
So that three twenty-five estimate for the two of them, would that be with the trade-in?
No, that's the, the numbers without trade-in, so you look at about ninety thousand dollars, you know, or eighty-five thousand dollars conservative. You bring that number down by a hundred and sixty.
Cause it's my understanding that right now, talking to Jim Skell, that, that that equipment, the used equipment's really bringing a high premium right now.
Yep. Same with used cars as, as everything, right? We've been looking for a, a used mini excavator for two, three months now for a good deal, and we can't seem to find one, so.
So with the examples that you're, you just used, RDO stepped up, I think that's because there was probably a manufacturer error in their defect, and that's why that would've happened.
Correct.
I, I still stick with my guns on this discussion we had two years ago, but I think we got a good plan and it's placed to.
Right, this would just expedite our plan, um, and lessen the risk to the county. You know, it, had we not had four of the same-year models at one entity, John Deere probably wouldn't have stepped up, right? We just, we figured it out, cause it was four identical failures within the county, so.
Got some good mechanics.
Yes, we do.
Joe, what are the three new FTEs?
So two of those would go to Rapid City, one full-time highway worker, and then the, the thought would be two part-time non-benefited, basically summer help. Would be the other, would, so a thousand forty hours apiece for both those people. And then the other FTE would go to, um, Hill City to help their shop during the wintertime. Not only with South Rochford Road, but it would, uh, it would help with the, the burnout factor up there. There are divisions that goes out the most often, um, during the winter months, it seems I get snows every day of the month, or every day of the week up there during the summertime, or during the wintertime, excuse me.
Thank you.
So Joe, did you request, uh, any FTEs in your regular budget this year?
No, I did not.
Mr. Chair.
So Joey, now that I got a rough idea what the size is, it's roughly twenty thousand square feet. Uh, Jim Meyer is building a similar facility out there, uh, on Nebraska's, uh, industrial park. It's about twenty thousand square feet, and I, last week indicated that that building was gonna cost, uh, roughly with concrete floor, eighteen to twenty-foot sidewalls, uh, blanket insulation, uh, electrical, I mean, just a kind of a heated shop around a hundred, a hundred and ten a square foot. So that would, uh, a twenty thousand square foot building, based on that conversation with Jim, would be closer to two million opposed to four million, seven, ten?
Well, we actually only put a million and a half in there for that building. The four, four point seven million is for the Hill City Shop and the Rapid City Shop.
Hill City and Rapid City?
Combined. So there's two different buildings there.
Oh. On the fourth.
Okay, so clarify this then, Joe. So item B says Hill City Shop Master Plan for Shop and Fuel Systems, sixty-five thousand.
Yep. Yep, A, B, C, and D.
And the next item C says Rapid City Yard Cold Storage Building Replacement.
Four million.
I just got our memo in, in front of me here. Let me bring up the pack here.
So on this, this secondary budget, guys, there's a sixteen new employee request this year.
How many?
Sixteen new employees.
Across the county, right?
Yep. That's a lot. I thought we had caught everybody up the last couple of years, Holly, and now we're back to people. Yeah.
Joe, if that's got both buildings, I didn't understand that from your memo.
Yeah, he put it as one, Joe, just Rapid City Cold Storage, that four million.
So that's my apologies, yeah, it, it is two separate buildings. We only, we put in about a million and a half for the, the Rapid City Storage Building, and the rest, the remainder would be for the Hill City Shop and Master Plan.
Did you have any money in your capital improvement funds that you're saving for, for new storage, or new storage, new, uh, buildings?
We have not begun for that, but we will, um, that's the plan, because Hill City does need it. This year, you know, this year we built our salt storage building, um, and we're trying to get South Rochford Road and Sheridan Road, Sheridan Lake Road built to kinda see where we're at, and those are the majority of our, our reserves funds, so um, I'm hesitant to spend that kinda money until we figure out where those two projects are gonna come in at and make sure we have those two projects funded completely.
Right, it seems, um, I know it's a, a lot of this is the wish list anyway, but it's nice to see, you know, what you do need, but it seems like more, some of these things need to be in the capital improvement, not just ongoing costs, like sixteen new FTEs is, to me is crazy on some of it, so.
Joe, would you say your, uh, A through D is the priority list?
I've gotta get to our, how that, I didn't look at the packet all, I've got it, like I said, it's our memo. Holly, what page is that in the packet, do you know?
Eric, um, do you have a minute? Come up, I have a question if I could.
Sure.
So the satellite office, Eric, is not made yet, so, um, and we don't really know what we're doing with that at this time. So are you requesting four FTEs, but we really don't have anywhere to put them right now, do we?
So part, uh, Eric, which is a public defender, so part of that request is is rent, because no, it does not exist, hasn't been built, looking in the, the marketplace.
Okay.
At that thirty-six thousand dollars, Commissioner Hancock, that's a conservative estimate of what it would cost to rent a fifteen hundred square foot commercial office base.
The two hundred and twenty-seven, then miscellaneous is what? For forty-three thousand?
Sorry, what, the forty-three thousand, total other expense, okay, that's the supplies and materials. That would be for desks and equipment, and then the thirty-six thousand is for rent. All the other incidental costs and supplies, we would just run through our normal budget.
So that's if we did a, if we could find a satellite building and.
Yeah, so in, instead of, uh, requesting a, a new building, we'd just be looking to rent at least now. My, my, my inquiry is or isn't something that's just readily available, you know, for a county building.
Thank you, sir.
All right, now that I've got what you're looking at, um, Gary, to answer your question, you know, the, the FTEs are an ongoing cost, so that's gonna hit our budget every year, and, and we've got, you know, about three point seven million in our, our wage budget already, so that's eating up quite a bit of our, our wage budget. So that would be likely a request from the general fund to fund those FTEs. And then to the one-time funding, B through C, um, I would go with, uh, probably, um, you know, D, C, B kinda backwards up in order there.
D, C, B?
Correct.
That's your priority?
That would be my priority, yes. And then you probably wanna actually split it out to A, B, C, D, and E, um, because the Rapid City and the Hill City Shop are two different items there. Item C is actually two different.
Your priority, so, say.
I would go with, uh, I would prioritize the two new blades, um, and then a Rapid City Cold Storage, and then the Hill City Cold Storage.
Rapid City Cold.
Hill City Yard.
And the motor grader.
So then just an overview on the Hill City, it'd be sixty-five thousand for the master plan, and then the balance would be for the?
For the building itself, yes.
Okay, so there would be a, a new building there too then?
Correct, yes. The, the building we're in is, was built in nineteen sixty by the DOT. It's got three, three bays that we can fit, um, trucks or motor graders in, and then we've got a cold. It's got three, three bays that we can fit, um, trucks or motor graders in, and then we've got a cold storage building that doesn't fit our equipment. You can't close the doors on it, so it doesn't keep it completely out of the elements, um, the way it should.
Would that building have to come down then, too?
Right, we would, both buildings would need to come down, and we'd build a brand-new building to house all of that. You'd probably have five or six bays in it rather than two separate buildings.
Oh, how many acres is that yard?
I'm guessing ten to fifteen. It's not real large at all.
So Cindy, I have a question. So you have total general fund secondary request, one million, two seventy-six, forty, right? On your secondary budget request?
That is correct.
The two million, five, and basically the two-three-three, the two-two-two, two-two-six, two-one-one, and the two oh-one. Um, you didn't put them under general fund, right? So.
No, all of those other funds are separate.
Okay, so when you separate them, they don't come out of the general fund, but they still. I guess, I don't know how you, I know how you plug them in, but I don't know. Julie used to plug those in kind of where they would go, and we would see what that would do to the budget if these requests, basically, we already know, if we funded the first part, it'd be one million, two seventy, so you would change that number to where it would be if we added one million, two seventy-six, forty to general fund, right?
The worksheet that you're looking at right now includes all secondary requests.
Okay.
So in the general fund, you're seeing the change from what the base budget is, plus the general fund budgets, plus it offsets, um, two point five million of what would be levied for accumulated building increases by two point five. General fund goes down by two point five, so that increases your cash supply. The money that would come out of savings or reserve to fund that.
So let's not leave the reserves at.
Right there, twenty percent.
So that's our goal, isn't it, to try to maintain that twenty percent ongoing?
Yes, it is, but this is, the secondary budgets are the ones that are also ongoing expenditures.
So.
That would affect your budget every year, and you'd have to be able to.
We would not be able to support that. That would not be sustainable.
No, because it'd take that much every year.
Right. I think that's what we discussed last week.
Yes.
That's why we only did one time. Anything that you changed now out of these are going to affect your budget.
So, capital improvements, we've been doing eight hundred thousand in the past?
That's correct. That's what Mike has been budgeting for those types of projects.
And that's recommendation is for two and a half million?
Two and a half million more.
More, okay, so what is, what is setting in that accumulated budget right now?
Um, in the, in the accumulated building fund as far as cash, it's probably a million and a half.
Yeah.
I think that's about where we were, maybe just over a million where we were.
Some buildings and grounds. Why we changed that, I guess Gary was, the eight hundred was getting ate up by other projects, and he wasn't doing his stuff for his buildings. Am I correct, Holly? Then, um, some of his other budgets were being used for other stuff as well. So we just said, pretty much, you're not touching any of this, and if you want, um, okay, Holly, you explained it. You're better at explaining it. So.
So basically, it, the thought process was to leave the eight hundred thousand in there for his, I already identified capital projects, so for like twenty-twenty-two, he had two rough replacements. I think a boiler was in there, um, and then to give him additional funding for like the in-house remodels that people are requesting to be done. And then the third pot of money to be what the building committee could use to fund other projects. Um, so right now, there's been two million put into that line item, thinking a million for building committee to do projects and a million to bump up their reserve since it's gotten so far down. The board can change that number in any way if they feel it's too much to do in one year, but that was the thought process behind it, was to still allow him to move forward with those capital projects every year, not have that money reallocated to other things that keep popping up.
True, okay. So this year would be not only the eight hundred thousand, but?
An additional two point five for a total of three point three.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, what would happen if we made an adjustment to that two point five million?
If what?
If we made a, an adjustment to the two point five million.
So I mean, the eight hundred thousand and?
Well, just, uh, instead of two point five million, make another recommendation, less, like, half of that.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
And still do the eight hundred thousand.
Then possibly next year.
Right.
I think that, that number can be played with, yes.
Sure. I mean, that's, uh, kind of the way I'm leaning right now.
How's that gonna impact what the plans are, or what our future plans are? Is it sustainable?
So keep it at eight hundred thousand like we usually do, and then instead of two point five, put one point five.
The one point two-five.
Five, two-five, cut it in half.
And where's that, or put, put that money at, Holly, then?
Mike would need to adjust it kind of based on what he thinks makes sense in each line item. It would, uh, reduce the reserve accumulation, um, and put the others at about two, two hundred and fifty thousand is what he could do.
That'd still give him enough to do some major projects, and then you could look at it again next year.
And some, some of these one-time, like the lobby and the courthouse tunnel, could also be into bonding or something with that other stuff that we have to do with, um, infrastructure. Remember on those one-times? So you might be able to reduce those two by doing it with bonding. Does that make sense? Because we're gonna have to bond at some time for that courthouse, um, infrastructure.
So Cindy, the, um, twenty-five thousand that Scott found in revenue, can, can that offset this twenty-seven thousand on the secondary request?
For his vehicle.
Yes.
Okay. So we're, so we're looking at two thousand instead of twenty-seven thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chair, and then planning and zoning. There's the vehicle for fifteen thousand, and Shannon indicated that they've got a Subaru nineteen ninety-eight or something that, uh, he would be more unhappy to part with. Is that something we could consider?
That's a junker.
I'm just picking tires.
They go pretty far to, to have a junker. I mean, they need something a little bit better than something, I mean, they, out of all the places, the equalization in them, in planning, travel all over Pennington County, and that isn't something you want to break down in.
I'm just trying to maintain that twenty percent reserves.
Brittany says she's happy with it, so I'm happy.
I think she, uh, yeah.
So Cindy, with those, changing that, um, accumulated building fund down to one point two-five plus that eight hundred, what does that set us at?
Twenty-four point seven-two in the general fund.
Thirty-four point seven-two without doing any of the other requests.
No, that is all of the secondary requests, but reducing the accumulated building secondary request down to one point two-five million.
Okay. You've got six, we still have sixteen new FTEs we're gonna have every year added to that budget.
Those are included in that number, yes.
I know, and that's not sustainable. Why ask, Eric, about satellite office? I don't think that's gonna be happening this year. I don't think we have a building or anything else. We do need to remodel there, though.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Cindy, uh, refresh my memory, but last week, um, we were talking about the secondary. Based on trying to maintain going into the future, the twenty percent for reserves, that we could, we'd have about five hundred and ninety-three thousand that we could, uh, that we could spend without, uh.
That was what I was estimating is.
Just wanted to make sure that I understood what we were talking about.
New tax dollars versus the new miscellaneous revenues that the departments bring in compared to what the budget request is, about five hundred thousand, more in revenue than what the increase in the budget request was.
And the emergency management fund, was that, was that all, uh, county funds, the hundred and seventy-nine-nine? Is that divided?
That half. Is the EMS staff position, is that for Pepper? Where's Dustin?
The EM staff position adjustments? That was what he had indicated he was gonna work with HR and redo all their job descriptions, so Mark, Alexa, Pepper.
So how much was that?
Uh, he doesn't have it broken down to my.
Can, can you text him or something, Holly, and see if he can break that down for us? And the audio visual would be part maybe of Rapid Cities? Ask him that, Holly. Please.
His secondary request, Mr. Chair, would increase the general fund operating transfer to emergency management by eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Okay. That's half of what the number is that we've got here.
We're paying them. I'm sure seventeen. So is the new FT for dispatch, is it, Kevin, is it eighteen? So we're only paying eighteen of that, not fifty-three, Kevin?
Yes, uh, the county's portion of that would be seventeen thousand.
Yeah, about eighteen.
Seventeen, eight, five, four.
Fifty-three. City, county. Thank you, Deb.
Deb, I believe on emergency management, the personnel portion is nine thousand, nine hundred.
So on fire administrator, I don't think Hill City or.
Silver City.
Um, Jerome, you have no land or anything for, um, Rochford right now.
Silver City.
Silver City, sorry. They have no land, am I correct right now?
Jerome Harvey, Penny County Fire Administrator, they're still working with the Forest Service on the land itself. That's correct.
Okay, and then the radio, six forty-seven has to be done, is these for towers, or what are they for?
It would be every, every bit of the nine-year plan that can, um, the majority of the nine-year plan is involved in that secondary request. So would put the, all of that, instead of spreading that out, it would put all those into a forklift upgrade on all of the stuff that's on that list.
So we could cut that down until, we could put some of it in there, but not have to put the six forty-seven because we have time to adjust it?
Correct.
Okay. That'd take, so how much are you breaking it out on the six forty-seven? How would you break it out in the next three years, four years, by the time in order to get those?
Yeah, the twenty-twenty-two and the twenty-twenty-three, um, twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three items would definitely take priority, and then we could spread it out from there.
Okay, what I'm saying is the six forty-seven, um, is for towers. How, how many years can you spread it out, or just it has to be done by next year? I mean, what is the priority on the six forty-seven?
The priority for anything in the six forty-seven, that would, uh, would be with the tower, our tower sites or new tower sites, would have to be the one that would be in Creighton, north of Wall, with a wall in Quinn.
And that'd be one tower, or?
That, that would be one site, that's correct.
For six hundred and forty-seven?
That would be, uh, about, uh, four hundred, uh, three hundred and thirty to four hundred thousand for one site.
Okay. So if we didn't do one of those, basically, eight hundred and thirty, one fire station and only, using three thirty, you'd reduce it eight hundred and thirty thousand. You can't do the, doesn't have any land for the one building right now, so that's five hundred. And the radios, if they need it mostly in Creighton, and that's probably the hugest area with the blank spot, it'd be three thirty. So you'd reduce the budget by about three hundred and thirty, if I'm correct. Am I correct?
Trying to follow you there, Deb. What are you saying?
If you took out, um, Silver Cities, because they don't have any land or anything right now, that's minus five hundred. And then we make sure we do Creighton, and out of the six forty-seven, that'd be about three hundred and thirty. So you're gonna take out of two, six, four, seven, eight hundred and thirty thousand.
And which buildings?
Just Silver Cities.
Just remove Silver Cities?
Yep.
Out of there, and then do the other three buildings?
Yep.
Say it again?
And then the radios, you'd take, uh, three hundred and thirty is what he needs out of the six forty-seven.
Right. So basically, the Wausau building, the scenic building, the Quinn building, and then that Creighton radio.
Yes. So that'd be in your first time one. You reduce two million, six forty-seven, minus eight hundred and I don't know, can't add. Did you reduce it, Travis?
Did you?
If I may, um, I, on this secondary worksheet that I opened up that had all of the budget in there, it did not have the six million dollars set aside per miss, per the, um, motion by Commissioner LaCroy. So that brings it down to sixteen point two percent. And I did add back in, um, the state's attorney's, um, request for the FT for his grant position that he is going to let my office work on.
Sure.
Taking that six million out, now we're down to sixteen point two-nine on the reserves.
We're way too far down. Yes.
That's too far down.
Yeah.
And that is with all of the other, um, requests that hit general.
Secondary requests all included in that?
Yep, all of the other secondaries in general fund, yes.
Yes, so.
Rest of the state's attorney, all of the public defender, um, buildings, grounds, equalization, all of those.
So you took state attorneys, satellite off, right?
And we took, took the one point two-five off of accumulated building.
You took emergency managements off because they only do half. Did you take it down half?
That, that's already what I had it at.
Eighty-eight?
Yes.
You got the eighty-eight. Then you have, instead of fifty-three for Kevin's, you have eighteen thousand?
It's, that's only affects, um, a portion of the operating transfer, and yes, that is out of this budget.
Okay, and then you got one point two-five on the cumulative, right?
Yes.
And then the vehicle replacement for weeding pest only needed two thousand?
The, um, his request is in there, the revenue is not yet in there.
For who's that?
Oh, I thought you said that he, he found twenty-five thousand or something.
He, he did. I have not yet adjusted the revenue side on this worksheet.
So Holly, on buildings and grounds, because Mike's not here. Did you understand what his secondary request? I mean, the, the dollar amount here is only about half of what the request is. So is all the rest of that in miscellaneous and other cost increases? Is that? You got two hundred thousand and?
What do you mean, sir?
Well, the request is for four hundred and fifty-two thousand, and all I'm showing is, uh, FTEs of a hundred and eighty-two. Well, the request is for four hundred and fifty-two thousand and all I'm showing is the FTEs of a hundred and eighty-two plus uh, and then the scrubber for sixty-two five.
Which is about two forty-four, which is about half that.
Yeah.
He's got two vehicles are a part of that.
Yep.
But that's, isn't that part of that auto scrubber too, the sixty-two five?
I don't believe so, no.
He's, did it wrong then because it says the total of those two vehicles and the auto scrubber is sixty-two five Holly. I know he does need the FTEs.
This budget would also cover the purchase of an auto scrubber for this building, so I stand corrected. That sixty-two five is for two vehicles and he says it covers the auto scrubber.
And what?
And it covers the purchase of the auto scrubber.
Okay.
That's about two forty-five.
Supplies, he had said that janitorial and maintenance have dramatically increased in cost over the last year. Um, about fifteen percent.
But we did give him the one five Holly. Still. Instead of the two, or one two five instead of the one.
No, we're talking two different budgets.
Okay, so if he would have put that in for his next year's budget, all those cost increases, would he not?
Mm-hmm, that's in his secondary request.
So the sixty-two five could have went into the one-time cost ones by the way. Right?
No, he's his operations at all?
Could, but he's.
No.
I don't know when he needs the vehicles, but he's probably not gonna need that scrubber for.
That's exactly what he did. His base budget operations are frozen, he submitted his increases as a secondary, so we're gonna need to adjust that.
Yes.
On, on his, on his.
On his base budget.
We'll have to have him revise his base budget. Which includes the amount for his supplies that he's going to need.
Yeah.
That's not a secondary, that's, yeah, that's not a want, that's a need.
So he needs his adjusted, right?
So the, the three FTEs is, is that something that he should be having in his?
Those I think are always submitted in secondary.
That's a secondary, yeah, because they're new positions.
Okay.
You guys need to vote on those.
Yeah. Okay, where else do you wanna go today?
I think we need to look at it a little bit different.
Yeah.
Look at it again.
Got a question for Cindy.
Yes.
Cindy, we know the provisional needs to be done by July thirtieth. Would it be prudent to, to, to accept the means of finance with growth in CPI, the original one that you have with eight million and as we work through that way, it's approved and we're not trying to rush to get to the end of the month? Or just leave it to?
I believe that, that we could make some of the adjustments that have been discussed today and then come forward with a, a
Okay.
Better idea for provisional rather than having to make all of those changes between provisional and final.
Okay. It was just.
I, I don't know how this premium pay, how this was figured.
I, I, thanks for bringing that up, but I just, I seen that and I'm not quite sure on that either.
Yeah.
So some of these are, our secondary budgets are wish lists and some are stuff that aren't. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
I guess I would like to know that because like you said, buildings and grounds, some of that isn't wish list, some of that should be in his regular budget, so that needs to be adjusted.
Yeah.
I think Holly could probably break this out in the past.
Yeah.
Employees, does this need to be updated a little bit?
If that's what the board wishes, I can certainly redo all of the information that you have and move the stuff around that you guys have done so with the one times and reduce out like fire and highway and the accumulated building and re-update the sheets for you so you have some totals that we could put on the July seventh or sixth commission meeting agenda with an updated means of finance from Cindy, so you guys kinda have a place to go from there.
Right.
Yeah.
Just to kinda see what we have right now based on what we've said today. Like I said, some of this is wish list and some of it's one time, it should be adjusted and Holly, maybe look in there because some of these are one times that might be able to go.
Create out the one times for sure, so that it's very clear that these are not part of the budget discussion.
Right, but if there can be one times that put her in this one time and some of this could be, I, I guess I gotta know if we can bond for some of this because we do need the public safety building, we do need the courthouse tunnel. But are we, I guess the future, are we bonding for our infrastructure and some of our stuff? And we wouldn't have to put it under this CF, C, where do you go, CRF funds?
That kinda sounds like the buildings and grounds or the building committee needs to have that discussion. You know, with that tunnel, you know, how long is it gonna last or is it gonna do another five? That's, it sounds like a question for them there.
Right.
So.
And you reduced the.
Holly, do you, when Mike came, he requested three new FTEs. Is that the same three that he's requesting in the secondary then?
Yes.
Okay.
You see what I'm saying? Some of that needs to be broken out a little bit differently so we can kinda see where everything's going and where it's affecting our budgets.
Mr. Chair. So Cindy, would it be safe to look at her means of finance and know that we want the twenty percent, or goal is twenty percent and then back into it?
A piece at a time?
No.
Well, I'm just saying that help give us guidance, uh,
No, that's.
what our latitude is and trying to make choices here.
Start with the base budget and Holly and I will work together to pick up all of the things that you've discussed to add or remove from those secondary so far and then we can come back with, with things.
Because what I've heard so far is that we need to uh, start prioritizing some of this stuff because it, it, it ain't all gonna work.
Well, the bottom line too, like I said, is when you're doing it, some could be one time. Some of those secondary could be maybe one time that we can look at and some of it could be bonding in some of the areas. Cause I believe we're gonna end up bonding for the infrastructure no matter what for the courthouse or the jail. Whether we like it or not. And how does that affect us in this, this overall budget?
Any increase in a bond payment is going to increase your accumulated building.
Right.
Budget, which is going to reduce the amount of tax revenue in your general fund.
Right.
Got a plan.
So we, we also need an occasion for emergency management too on those, on the dollar amount. Cause I go back to my notes, what Dustin presented and he said a hundred and seventy thousand total is a half.
Eighty-eight.
Well, I wrote it down as a hundred and seventy was, was needed from the county for it.
I, I have his revenue side of that. And just give me one second. With that secondary budget, he submitted a secondary revenue, which includes eighty-eight thousand from the city and eighty-eight thousand from the county.
Okay.
So it's half.
Okay.
Yep. And the lobby for public safety is only four, not only, but it's four hundred and so eight hundred, so you guys change that. Courthouse tunnel, I guess. I, I didn't hear about that.
How bad is that?
Oh.
It's probably been that way for quite a while and I think it could probably still stay that way for a while. I don't know, the pictures that I saw, I wouldn't call it a priority.
Doesn't impact the foundation?
Uh, I don't think so, but Mike would be able to one, be able to tell you that.
I'll keep saying that you're gonna have to do the infrastructure and that's probably gonna be part of it.
That, that, from the sounds of that.
Probably put that together.
So I would take the six fifty out and put it towards when we're gonna do the, to reduce that down six fifty.
Okay.
So minus the six fifty. Take all, all the sheriff stuff for a million. I never, I, he's not on his phone, I was hoping he's on his phone and he didn't hear that.
Did we get a, a good estimate on the, on the jail?
Kevin, is that twenty-eight eight 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 still kind of the number that we're looking at for the jail?
I think it was eighteen for the first part for infrastructure.
The number that we, we got back was twenty-eight and that's a rough number. I'd put the number somewhere between twenty and thirty million, depends on the scope and what the bids actually commit. I, right now everybody's nervous about construction prices, everybody's figuring high. But there are some things you have to look at in scope if you want to dial that back a little bit, but you're gonna be north of twenty million pretty easy.
So at least twenty for the first part and then anything in between there for?
Okay. Anything else?
The courthouse tunnel, not doing.
So what was the number that we kinda?
Do we just re- reset?
Came up with on the?
Fire?
Fire.
Fire was um, one point five plus three thirty, one point eight thirty, right?
One point eight thirty.
Get some, have the radios so they got some expenditures going and then three other buildings are all needed. Creighton um, tower.
Anything further to discuss?
Lamp lighter demolition wasn't in this year's budget for Mike? Ron, do you remember?
I thought we approved that as a supplement, but I, I don't remember.
What are you, what are you saying?
We didn't.
Lamp lighter demolition and parking, I thought we had that in the, this year's budget.
I don't believe so.
So how's he gonna do it this year? He was gonna get it done this year, how is he gonna do it?
Then we would require a supplement.
How much is left in his budget this year for anything or do you know Cindy?
I, I'd have to, I don't know what he spent this year so far.
Okay, I guess that'd be a question to ask him Holly. Is the lamp lighter this year and how much funding did he have to? Cause he was asking the building committee this year to demolish it.
No.
He didn't put it in the wishlist or anything, meaning the secondary. He just put it in CRF funds.
That, that would be a one-time funding use for the one-time funds, yes.
Yes, sir, or yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Forty premium, we could cut that down about seventy-three, just kidding. Everybody's looking at me like, okay Deb, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm not taking your premium.
Anything further?
Guys have worked hard this year.
Do we wanna talk about the um, Central States Fair, are we gonna keep it at that point four nine?
Point oh four nine?
Point oh four nine for the five hundred thousand or do we, because that's gonna impact the general fund as well. But that's reflected up here, is that current?
No, that, um, his full request that he presented is in the five hundred and, five hundred thousand.
Right.
Is in there.
Yes.
It's in there, it's concluded.
Yep.
Is in there, okay, so it's already reflected.
It's already reflected in there.
Yeah. Anything further?
Anybody else?
I take a motion to adjourn.
They'll move.
Motion to adjourn. Got a motion in a second, all in favor, indicate a saying aye.
Aye.
Motion great.